Ready? Okay. Call the Order of the Party, Owen Board of Education. Do I have to be Fudge of Legis, please?
The legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Meredith Cole.
Here.
Brian Hamm.
Here.
Dan Holloway.
Here.
John Kern.
Bruce Whitezer.
Here.
Susan Mormon.
Here.
Darlene Bailey.
Here.
Have a forum. Adopt them in the agenda.
Move that the agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Post? Public comment? Do not have anyone for public comment this evening? Consent agenda. Any questions about the consent agenda?
I would like a little more clarification around the Getting Smart proposal. Is that proposal for five months?
Yes. It would start in August and run through the end of February, whatever.
January?
The scope of work starts February.
Okay, the one contract is through the January, so that's where I came up with the five months. I'm just questioning the work that we've done so far. Are we finished with that work and we've recognized the benefit of what we're doing with Getting Smart? We fully recognize the benefit, or is this a continuation of?
This is a continuation. Really, the work we've done so far, we have done that on our own. You know, talking to other districts, talking through that, kind of copying off of what other districts had done, and it's been an awesome process. But now we're at a stage, and you know, we said this is going to be truly our North Star for the district. This is, we have talked to community members, staff, graduates, and pulled them in, and this is what they feel are the most important competencies that we want our kids to graduate with. So now that next step is to have, I mean, there would be teachers working on this as well and administrators, but having these people to help lead us, create these great span progressive skills to say, okay, now what does this look like in the kindergarten, the second grade range? What does it look like all the way through graduation? And that's, you know, that's all of the competencies and all of the characteristics that the task force.
So the deliverables that are being produced will be used now?
So it goes from kind of a conceptual into how do we actualize it in the grade levels within the schools? And really, you're using outside boys, probably some of the top consultants to help mobilize the work.
I mean, that's what they're going to lead us through. I mean, the rubrics to make sure our kids are getting this. What does this look like? How do we know they have it?
I'm just concerned about the cost for what we're getting for the deliverables. I don't know if it's worth it or not. If you're telling me it is and you're championing it, you know, it just wasn't apparent based on the proposal and everything that I could say, yeah, that's worth it. So that's just why.
And I would agree that you look at it in the proposal and you don't see that, but what these people do, I've seen, you know, they are the people that work with Kaufman in real world learning. They're the ones that are behind that whole thing.
Well, I mean, I know Tom Vander Artgen has worked with him as well.
And Rebecca Meadows, who does this, who's probably been in things with Rebecca Meadows as well. She is his right-hand person. She's amazing.
Okay. And there's other individual school districts working with him as well, helping to move that work. We have a neighboring district that's part of this.
Yeah, that, I mean, yes, that uses him for, uses Getting Smart for a variety of things that their district is doing.
Yeah, there. I think one of the, one of the concerns is that we originally only had the one document that was the proposal, and we didn't have, and typically in our consent agenda, we have contracts to be signed. And so there was a little bit of confusion because of the documentation that we had. And I know that you added these other two documents this afternoon, which is good because I think that that helps explain. We just didn't have a lot of time to review those. So that's something we can work on, either to put something like that outside of the consent agenda so that we have more time to discuss it or pull it. And that's something that we can work on in board leadership to make sure that we are comfortable with it too, so.
If you feel like there's additional information that we need to gather for you, you can do that as well.
But if we do, I don't necessarily think it makes sense to wait for a month to vote on that again. That's what I'm concerned about. Because it says it's August through end of January, however, or actually through August. So it's really probably by the time we start working on everything, it's at least September, right? And, you know, I just, I just didn't, like I said, I didn't look at the new things that came into the agenda this afternoon. So, because I hadn't seen those, I don't know if I'd change my mind by looking at them or not, honestly.
Honestly, a problem. I mean, the first proposal, they then sent a scope of work, but the scope of work is pretty much, it's the same thing as the proposal. And then the contract, what it does is it just refers back to.
I guess I thought the scope of work was pretty light.
Well, the scope of work, new contract, new information that's in there is more like a contract. It's signed off and agreed upon. And as I'm reading it here, will begin August 22nd, '22 and be completed by February 28th, 2023. So it adds two months.
Again, I'm looking at this quickly, but.
There's still.
So the proposal was a proposal. This solidifies the work and changes the dates, and this document is what we actually signed off on. Is that? On the statement of work versus, one of the documents says February 1st, so that's not the point. It's, I felt like the statement of work was, was not specific enough, wasn't, didn't have media enough deliverables for me to really justify the cost.
So the outcome, the action?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
But you do, like you guys, you guys do.
Well, I mean, because I know the work that these people do.
Right.
Yes, I do. I mean, if it would, if you need more detailed information, I can go back to them. And if it pushes it, I mean, if it pushes it off a hump, that pushes it off a hump.
We could probably get samples of their work or what they've done, what their districts have done.
You understand the deliverables and you, and you're, you think it's worth it? If you say yes, that's okay. That's what you can ask.
I do, I mean, this is a, it's a huge undertaking, and they're the ones that are going to have to take us through this.
Okay. I trust that we'll see deliverables that come out of it that we're pleased with, so.
Any of the travel expenses, the way I understand it, any travel expenses that are over and above will be approved before they happen. And there's economy of using other districts and the work that they have to bring these people in at the same time.
Yep. And honestly, when I had talked to Rebecca Meadows, I don't know, sometime at a Kaufman thing, and there was work that we had talked about them helping us with at that time, different than this. And she said, hey, you know, when we're coming in to work, because they work with Liberty, they're here with Kaufman all the time. She's like, hey, when we're coming in, we can make it super affordable, we'll just make it all at once.
Any other questions? Are you comfortable with the consent agenda?
I think I'd like it separated out, just this topic for a separate vote.
Okay.
So move that we move the Getting Smart proposal to action items separate.
So I think what we need to do first is a motion and a second to approve the consent, and then we would have a motion to move. I just changed my phone.
Approve?
So, no, we don't approve it. Motion, motion and second, but we don't actually vote. Then somebody, then you would also motion, there would be another motion to.
Which I should have asked for that before I started the discussion, so that's. So can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
That seems odd that we do that first, but move that we move the proposal for Getting Smart to action items.
Second.
Okay. Then we have to vote on that, that it's moved? All in favor, moving? Post? Now we will vote on the remaining pieces of the consent agenda. All in favor? opposed?
Does somebody else want to make a motion?
Move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
But we'd already done that, right?
Because it's been amended. Yes.
You're right. So there's three motions. Okay. So we have that moved to second tier.
Okay.
All right.
All in favor? Post? Okay. So now we're back to.
I haven't been around today.
So now we have that item as a separate agenda item.
So, yeah, do you want, do you want, it's going to take me a minute to get that move to.
I think, say, we've got information items, so you can have.
Yes, right. I'm going to look at that while you get information.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll move on to information items. Financial?
The July information includes the 47 million we received on a bond sale. And next month, we will read, we get a tax, assess high locations for our, in the counties. So we'll provide a tax rate and adjust our revenues. And at that time, we'll also have a better idea on personnel costs, so we'll bring in a project in that period. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, Ginger. Construction update?
Good evening, everybody. So somebody got to tour the district office today. Things are going very well there, so we are just finishing up drywall. So all the new offices are framed out. The painter should start by the end of the week, and that kind of allows us to go to the next phase, paint, and you put ceiling grid in, put lights and diffusers and things like that in. And then most of, next month, we'll be flooring, finishes, things like that. Things are tracking very well, working well with the design team, DLR, and still tracking to finish mid-October. So everything looks good. We have been having early meetings on elementary school stuff, so that's kind of kicked into gear, which is positive momentum there. Nothing really to report on, but there is some design action happening, so. All things are good right now.
Any questions?
I look good.
Yeah. It's nice to see it kind of all laid out, seeing the state.
When you start with the elementary, did I hear you say last time you were here that you were going to look at hiring some local people?
Absolutely. So what we'll do is we'll have some communication sessions. We might do like a luncheon, like a barbecue or something, advertise it out, get everybody in, and we'll talk to them about the timeline of not only the elementary, but some of the other smaller projects too. Because sometimes a big elementary can be a little much for some smaller companies, but we've got several projects within this bond issue, so we'll bring them in, lay out all their schedules, and when we think timing would be the bid. The goal is to give them every opportunity to have a piece of work that's here and that we should, yeah. We'll put a big effort forward there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Action items. Set a date to conduct the tax rate hearing.
So move to conduct the tax hearing in conjunction with regular board meeting September 21st of 2022.
Second.
Any questions about that? All in favor? Post? Thank you. Item B, approval of the tuition rate for 2022, '23, '23?
Move to approve the tuition rate for the 2022, 2023 school year as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Post? Item C, contract with the city in carney. Mr. Elbridge.
Thank you, Madam President. Back earlier this year, we approached the school board in executive session and inquired about the interest of selling ground to the city for consideration of doing some drainage improvements on the baseball field. And we sort of had an agreement that we move forward with that, and we want to acquire 3.2 acres. There's a survey on your table that shows the 3.2 acres, which is the old tennis court property. And we want to expand and develop 12 pickleball courts there. We'll still keep our skate park there, although we've decided that we're going to tear out the skate park area and put in post-tensioned concrete for future expansion of pickleball courts. We could add a fourth of the four there, and it needs a new surface anyway. So we're going to kind of obliterate the whole site and spend a couple million dollars there. And we're hoping that the football is something that may of interest for school patrons as well, but certainly it is something that's been pushed in our community lab route, and we're prepared to address that. The contract that we proposed to you was prepared by Gilmore and Val, who is your bond counsel as well. And they, the important clause is, there's section five for other consideration. This is an unusual contract because we're doing something in consideration that not exactly is money, but we do evaluate it at $1,660. That is verified on your McConnell estimate, that we are pursuing a cooperative purchasing contract with McConnell, very similar to what you all did with the tennis courts a few years ago. That was also a McConnell project, and they also handled that as a cooperative purchasing under the TIPS program. It's a cooperative purchasing program that's endorsed by our state, and we intended to expedite that at our August 29th meeting, pending your favorable approval of this real estate contract. And also, there's some other matters that we want you to consider. The ground that we're acquiring was all placed in the Land and Water Conservation Fund Trust because the school in 1980 acquired a grant to help build those tennis courts. And what that means is, is there's been a perpetual commitment made that that ground forever be used for outdoor recreation. And so we've talked to our state officials, and they say we don't have to go to the feds in Omaha, which is a good thing. And we can work with the state office on the paperwork and get all those things in place. One thing about the LCWF is that you guys placed about 15 acres into the grant, into the trust. So the 3.2 acres, we'll sign an agreement saying we're going to assume the responsibilities. And also on the trail, you guys needed us a trail, it comes up to about four acres that we're going to say that we're going to keep for outdoor recreation forever. And then you guys still have to, they're asking you guys to put a restrictive deed covenant on the remaining about 11 acres. on the remaining about eleven acres, I think, that keeps it in what they call the six F boundary, which is a, which is a sacred boundary that we're all gonna respect and not do anything except things that are related to outdoor recreation. And so we've gotta, you know, carry that on. So that's something we'll assume, and we're in business tonight. But the real estate contract is, we assume all of the closing costs. We, we're paying for the survey, we're paying for the title insurance. There should be no out-of-pocket expense for the school on this at all. And we're pleased to be able to do this drainage work. I had, have my engineer done it, but, but he has designed a drainage project that, that will, that we, that he believes will, will solve the problem for standing water. Now, when it rains cats and dogs, you're still gonna see a pool of water. But it's gonna be gone much quicker because, you know, it's, it's, it's a flat area and it's, it's gonna catch water. But it will, it will, this will rain it, and it will be dry, it'll get, it'll get dry much quicker. So I'm, I'm confident in the plan. And I was gonna have the engineer explain it to you if you need it. I'll be glad if you carry questions to him or, or even get him on the phone if you wanted to ask him a question tonight. But anyway, McConnell will also build this. And I'm hoping that you guys have faith in your, in McConnell because you've used him before, and we have faith in him to do this project. And so I think if, we've got a, a first-rate contractor and a first-rate engineer doing this, doing this improvement, and, and I think we'll deliver a, a project that we can all be proud of.
When do you look to start this drainage project?
As soon as, as soon as in the fall we can get going. My, my contract, or my, my prices from McConnell expire September one. We are going to sign a contract with them on August the twenty-ninth. So we, we're expecting them to be able to, to go to work just as soon as possible.
And how long will the drainage itself project take?
Weather, weather permitting, and, and, but I, I do believe they can get it in this fall. And that's pretty important to you, I know, because we wanna place baseball in the screen.
Yeah, and we talked about that too, Jim, I put water away from those baseball fields too long, yeah, okay, yeah.
So do we have...
But, but most of this work is not out in the field area, so, so, you know, it's... I don't, I don't see foresee it being that critical as, as far as the play area.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have Eric, who, if you would like to know a little bit more about the pickleball courts. He may not wanna know about it.
No, please.
We had a group of pickleball leagues that we've started, and their ultimate goal was to have us...
This is the other Eric Marshall.
The one that lives in Kearney. And works in Kearney. But anyway, our twelve pickleball courts, we will have a, two dividers in the middle of them. That way people can watch both sides of the court. We can put up sun shades and things of that nature along with bleachers in this walkway. But the twelve courts will all be lit with LED lighting. As Jim mentioned earlier, the entire area will be demolished. New parking lot, bathrooms, which we will, permanent bathrooms such as the ones down at Lions Park, at the Splash Park, it will be that type of bathroom. It will sit really close to the trail, so the trail walkers will be able to use that as well. The doors will lock at a certain point, whichever time we want, at night, that way to help prevent vandalism. This whole area will be, we will have security cameras. This way, in case there is vandalism, which we hope doesn't occur, at least we will have an option of finding these people in case something like that would happen. But the parking lot, as you all know, that parking lot right now is really small. We will have at least seventy-three stalls there, so that is a major improvement to that area. Handicap accessible ramp from the pickleball area to the bathrooms. As Jim mentioned earlier, this area right here is going to be the skate park. We will reuse our skate park features that we have right now. Those will just be stored out to the side. And down the road, in case this just keeps growing and growing and growing, that's one thing that we wanted to do, is make sure that that area was in the post-tensioned concrete for future expansion if so desired. So we're excited about the project. It's, Jim mentioned, a two point one million, around two million dollar project, including the drainage area, that we want to get that done for you. And if I may tell the board, I met Emily for the first time discussing this project, and she's been wonderful to work with, getting us the paperwork, that way we could get everything ready and send down to Jeff City to the LWCF personnel. So we appreciate your cooperation right off the bat with a, a project that you came in on as we've already started. So thank you very much. If you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them.
How many leagues do you currently have filtered through?
We have two leagues, plus we will have another league because we're, it's getting so big, we're gonna have a separate competitive league, a higher league. We're starting just a very beginner league, and then we have the kids league. We hope that the, not only our leagues, which we have in the wintertime, we house those in a church, but we hope that the school will take advantage unless these courts are available and play pickleball as well. But right now we have about three leagues going on, and they're, it's holding. So, of course, we only have three quarters, but we want to really expand this, and we think we will, and it's a needed...
Oh, and I don't know if you guys have somebody on staff, or is there someone to give lessons on pickleball?
There are. In fact, Kat Tomlin, she teaches. We have a couple other people. We've had one of the person I know out of Baldwin that has come up and give private lessons, Jim Conmichael. She's one of the top players in the sixty to seventy range in the nation, and she teaches a lot of lessons, and she teaches down at the college at Baldwin.
I'm glad to hear that we have the beginners. I played, I played in the league a couple of years ago, and I was thoroughly embarrassed. I need to be in the beginning league, so I'm happy.
We need a group lesson for us.
Here's the thing, we've had people call up to City Hall, and we have just some paddles and balls that people can check out, use. So if you know of anybody that, that wants to do that, by all means, send them to City Hall. We, we give them that, and they just check them out and bring them back, so...
That's awesome.
We're excited about the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. She did, so we have a motion. All in favor? Opposed?
I don't think we moved it.
She does, she made that, I thought you made it.
No, you didn't.
Okay, I didn't...
You didn't remember?
Move to approve the contract in the city of Kearney as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I'm going to plead... Driver's leg?
Normal high excuses.
You have how many kids again? There we go. I only have one, but I still have driver's leg. Okay.
I don't know if mine's updated. If you hit refresh, it will update, okay.
Is it at the bottom?
Yeah, it's...
Next, we have approval of the resolution appointing the authorized agent.
So move to approve the res- resolution appointing authorized agent for the sale of the real, real property to the city of Kearney as presented.
Second.
Any questions about that? That just basically authorizes Emily to, after I signed the first contract, to go from there? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Item E, approval of resolution authorizing transfer of LWCF parkland to the city of Kearney.
Move to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of stewardship of four point one-six acres of Land and Water Conservation Fund LWCF parkland to the city of Kearney for continued outdoor recreation purposes as presented.
Second.
Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And enough? Approval of declaration of deed restriction.
Move to approve the declaration, declaration of deed restriction as presented.
Second.
Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, we appreciate the work.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, look forward to it.
Did that refresh?
Well, I hit the wrong button.
It's up on the screen too.
So approval, so I make the motion, right?
Approval of proposal, proposal from Getting Smart.
Approval, proposal, master service agreement and scope of work from Getting Smart for Portrait of a Graduate as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or discussions on this item?
I mean, I think I see what Susan's saying, just from the aspect of, like, I trust Jennifer and her perception of what is supposed to be done, but I think it's for forty thousand dollars, the descriptors are pretty vague on what they're supplying for that forty thousand dollars, and I think where it could get us in trouble with not having it more clearly defined is we have an expectation that suddenly they're like, oh, well, that wasn't included, and we're not doing that. And I don't know all the details, but I think that the issue becomes we don't have any accountability to hold them to of specific details of what they're gonna provide for that money. And so that could get us in trouble down the road if we don't know what that is. I think you're, probably, your expectations are correct, and I trust those, but it's more them that I don't trust following through on not having those spelled out yet.
Well, I agree, I think it would be all of our expectations and our standards that we want for them. I, I agree, that sort of thing. And so when it's big, it's just like hiring somebody, and me going, hey, Susan, I'm gonna hire you, and your job description is, well, it could be this or this stuff. And when we do your review, could be on this or that stuff.
Well, I believe, Jennifer, that you're probably so intimately involved with it, you get what they're gonna do and things like that. The fact that their proposal doesn't follow through with that, just concern me. It's, so it's not that I'm voting, I would vote against this, but I would abstain from not having enough information to feel comfortable voting one way or the other, I guess is more of where I'm coming from, you know?
You're like bullet points and targets and all that.
Yeah.
This isn't their first year doing this, correct?
Yeah.
That's history.
Yeah.
No, they're, I mean, they're nationally known.
Retake, their reputation stands for it.
And this is their proposal they bring to us.
And I mean, I'm fairly knowledgeable on real-world learning, and so just, just, I'm not as comfortable with it.
I act, I have a meeting with them either Monday or Tuesday, and I, I mean, I'm happy to, to talk to them and just ask them to give more detailed information and...
But then it does push you back a month.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't want you to not be able to meet the deadlines that you've set forth because we push back a month either. Now, if you're telling me it's not gonna impact it enough, then...
Would it be reasonable to ask Jennifer to, after she meets with them, to provide in a future board update, kind of a schedule for what the meetings will be, what they're going to be doing in the next four or five months to give us a preview of what... Because I would assume that for that meeting, you'll set the dates of when you're gonna have the monthly this and monthly that, and those kinds of things.
And timelines.
And so just to give us kind of a report to update us on what will actually happen. That makes me feel more comfortable.
But if we do that, does that set you two back? I, well, I guess what I was saying is... But then we would have that expectation that we would be, we would get a report from her sooner than later about what's going to actually happen.
How long have you been working on that? Like, how long has this kind of been in the works of...
Well, it, we worked on it all last year.
Okay.
I mean, it was quite a process going through all of it.
Okay.
And, and, you know, honestly, I don't want anybody to not feel comfortable with something. So I would rather push the work back a month than have everybody, you know, than having people feel uncomfortable with the work. I want you guys to feel good about it. So if it gets pushed back a month, then it gets pushed back a month.
But you are comfortable moving forward, and your team is comfortable moving forward with it.
Yes. But I, I mean, I'll tell, I mean, it's a... Getting through the entire process, I mean, it very well could not happen this year, getting through everything. They are going to give us all the tools, they are going to train us, but we've gotta work with all the individual teams to get it done.
Jennifer, do you wanna talk through some of the process? And people you involved leading up to this recommendation, and how this is gonna look looking forward?
Just what we have done?
Yeah.
Um, well, I mean, initially we set out, had a video created that Ray worked on and sent that out to the public, just talking to them about what a portrait of a graduate was. Then we had, we created surveys that went out to the community, to the staff, and to the students. And we took all of those, created a book that had all of the different attributes that our community, we had them rank how important these different things were. And then our task force pulled together four different times. And I mean, I, I have not worked on a task force in this job where the people were, I'm not getting so committed and into this work. I mean, they were excited about it, and, and once they really analyzed all of the data, they put together what they felt represented, what our community wanted as the most important competencies that our kids would graduate with. And then once they had those competencies, then it was working on, okay, what exactly does that mean? What, what are the attributes of that competency? So then, you know, the visual was created, which you guys have seen that at a previous board meeting. We have presented that to the staff at Summer Institute. They're very excited about the work. But now we gotta take the different attributes that they have gone through and say, okay, what is now, what exactly does this look like for this grade range? And how are we going to assess it at this grade range? And how do we make sure this is, this is what our kids are gonna walk away with? So we'll have those progressive scales all the way through for all of those attributes. And how are teachers going to build these things in, to their classes? With, you know, without, I mean, we want to neatly embed it in so that it's not just something, a whole lot more, but just make it work.
Susan, we just wanted to see some of what you had for share, that goes in the scope of work, basically?
Deliverables, timelines, yeah. What, what are the tangible, if there are any, items that will be delivered? Or that we will produce with them, that kind of thing?
I think Jennifer's got it, I mean, it's clear, clear, her mind.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's no doubt in my mind that she's got it.
I, I don't know, it feels, I'd say, well, I'd like more information.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and it's been seconded, so we have to, not, we-
We could, I think we could either vote, but, or we could have another motion to table this to next month's meeting.
I don't know that we table it for next month's meeting.
Would that be appropriate?
I thought we came up to motion.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, the table kills the motion drops. The table needs a second though, right?
Second.
Okay. So we have motion to table, we have a second. Oh, we just have a, so we need to vote on that. Is that correct? Okay, all in favor of tabling this proposal or this item to next month's meeting? Which one? For opposed? Okay, so we will do this next month. And in the meantime, we can talk about how we want to present more information. Given that we're looking at a month, do you, first, how do you perceive this impacting work that's planned?
Well, do you? Question back.
Okay, okay. Well, I just, I just asked, so that's fine. All right. All right. So. Board member comments? You guys ready?
Yes.
Think we are. Ray, you ready?
We are ready. I'll listen down.
Ryan?
Ready.
You guys ready?
I was going to say, you guys ready?
I'm looking around every employee here. Are y'all ready? Are y'all ready out there? Okay. Well, we appreciate your all's work to get things ready for the school. And I know the teachers have been working hard. It was great to see everybody here at the K teacher orientation last week. And a lot of them, I'm sure we're ready, so. Anybody else have anything they want to add? All right. Important dates, tomorrow night's open house, so I guess we better be ready, right? Convocation is Friday at ten a.m. Who is, who, do we know who is planning to be there?
Um, yeah, I think three, Darlene, Mayor.
John will be there.
And John's?
And John, okay.
Okay, okay, good. First day of school is August twenty-third.
I'll be there for that.
You'll be there for the first day of school? There's a party after that with pom poms and- Right? And then our next board, our new school on September fifth for Labor Day.
I will note that Northland Cap's first day of school is the twenty-second, not the twenty-third. And they're not very happy about it, those kids.
And then our next board meeting will be September twenty-first. All right.
Action for closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in September, including any record revoked to discuss items and issues allowable under section six one zero dash zero two one of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Second.
Go on call please.
Meredith Cole?
Yes.
Brian Hamm?
Yes.
Dan Holloway?
Yes.
John Kerr? Bruce Whitezer?
Yes.
Susan Mormon?
Yes.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes.